And sponsor for 24 hours and share in one point. Open your eyes and looks in the distance as if she recognized someone.
Um, so I got it.
There was nothing more. I mean, it took her a while. But it's clear.
It doesn't seem to fall. That's right. Oh, yeah, no.
Just that's cool. Yes, and then I went to one. This is second gen. The funeral was two thousand actually came, but I went for open slash the weekend.
No, maybe it was not.
Yeah.
It even was you're gonna have.
Oh, and there is this.
Yeah.
My back on here. Our question is, can you do the Saturday morning?
That's that.
Everybody, you know.
That's who we get. Casey or that you wanted to say it to a lot. Somebody should do that.
Folks, given that it is seven oh one, I will go ahead and call our continuing to order. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. And if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And it's for the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God. And this call with the duty of justice for.
Just as a reminder, if you have a cell phone on you, please make sure that it's turned off when silent. Say quick, may the way Kate roll call for us, please.
Jennifer Roberts.
President.
Here. Here. Jackson.
Here.
Here. David.
Present.
Here.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So moved.
Support. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. So this evening, we are going to start off with recognitions and presentations. Uh, first is uh, for Lieutenant Eric Phipps. And Deputy Dave Winder, if both are present, if you can please come forward. So as many of us are aware, on June twenty fourth of this year. The end and magical happened, um, where four children's lives. Were at risk. Um, police were called. To the scene and. Luckily, the two gentlemen standing before us. Were able to make it there in time. To one, save the two year old. But to two, also get the mother into the position of getting care herself. It was a chaotic scene. Some of us may have seen the footage of that. Again. I don't know if I could have handled such a situation. But that goes to the training. And the experience that these two men. Have in their back pockets to handle a crisis situation. For that, the city council wants to recognize. What you did for that family. What you were able to do to follow up afterwards. To make sure that all of those kids came out of that situation. So we do have two flats. Um, we also have Chief Kep. Sheriff Hinkley here. So if Chief Cup or Sheriff Hinkley would like to also stand and say a few words, I'm sure it would be appreciated.
Um. This was one of those hard things for officers to deal with, and I've watched this video, I don't know how many times now. And I really struggled with releasing it to the public, but I thought it was important that the public see what these officers did in saving people's lives that day. Um. You're involved in a lot of tragic things that happen as a police officer. This is probably one of the most tragic. Um, I know when I was a new detective and uh, I had a infant die shortly after my son was born. And and that's very difficult to deal with. And you see. The family here, these officers, and they've got little children at home as well, too. So that makes it even more difficult to deal with, you know, and so I thought it was important that people see exactly what occurred. Um, not just through the words that I put out in a press release, but rather actually see what happened. Um, and see what these officers actually have to go through sometimes. So um, you see the good, you see the bad, um, but. The actions of these officers were amazing. They did exactly what you're supposed to do uh, without hesitation. So congratulations. Thank you.
I think that sums it up rather well. I I I just. You know, we look and we look, we we build human police officers, not superhuman police officers, right? And so when we look at the individuals and the individuals in uniform. We often you look at the uniform, but you have to really look at the character and integrity of the individuals that are inside these uniforms. That's what counts. And I will assure you through this colony, and I have I have had contact, I've taught at the police academy for over twenty six years. We're in contact with many, many of these. I call them kids that are working at these departments. And you have some of the best people, best police officers working in this community. They truly care. And I just think. Both of these, both of these men here. What an outstanding uh, job that they did. And uh, and I'm just proud of both of them. And I I I can't tell you how proud I am and uh. And I know how proud our community is. So thank you.
So um, as you both can also imagine, you know, we know that. You didn't want to be present. You don't do this job for the recognition. You don't do it for the pat on the back. But we would be truly remiss if we didn't say how grateful we are for both of you. Um, you know. Aaron is an Albian kid, grew up here. This is his community. And I know he would do anything for anybody who lives in this community. And I'm grateful for the relationships that we have with other departments that can come in in time of need. Um, we know time and time again, we have to make that call, unfortunately, because we have situations that we just don't have the manpower for. So I appreciate Sheriff Hinkley for being here because we do have a great relationship with the Sheriff's Department. Um, but just to say thank you, again, we are eternally grateful that you both were there and could handle that type of situation. We do have these certificates for both of you. Just a little something, if you so decide to hang up somewhere proudly. I'm sure the families will make sure that that happens. This is for Lieutenant Aaron's business. And this is for Deputy Dave Winder.
Thank you all.
Either of you like to say any words? This is your.
You can say no to that, too.
I think I'm pretty exhausted by it, but uh, I can tell you. I didn't know Dave was in the area. As soon as I turned the corner and saw him, I. I was ready to get that.
And you can relieve, yeah.
Boss wants to take your picture. It's upside down.
And he's alive.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. In front of your hands. I'm telling.
Yeah.
And they have been in a moment.
Great God. You never expect to see that stuff popping up on your speech. So that enough to.
Describe this.
Oh, you definitely don't.
Was.
He's not coming.
Oh. Alright, so next I have a proclamation honoring Pastor Fred Alexander. Whereas Pastor Fred H. Alexander Junior began his ministerial career as an associate pastor. At Union Baptist Church in Lansing, Michigan. With experience and skill development as an associate pastor, he transferred his membership to his childhood church, Bethel Baptist Church here in Alvin. He continued growth, proficiency, and desire led to associate and senior pastor of Bethel. And whereas Reverend Alexander Junior has been the leader of Bethel Baptist Church since the early nineteen eighty. His attainment of this position followed a Bethel legacy. His father, Reverend Fred Howell Alexander Senior, was pastor of Bethel and upon his father's tenure, Reverend Earl Blow became pastor. After Reverend Blow's untimely death, Reverend H. Fred H. Alexander proved himself ready to take the helm and has held the position since nineteen eighty three. And whereas during the past forty years, Reverend Alexander has effectively prepared sermons. By researching and writing sermons to present Bible lessons to meet the spiritual needs of the members and community. He informs, persuades, and comforts a congregation by using effective communication techniques. Scenarios and illustrations to maintain interest and involvement during Sunday morning church service. And whereas he officially officiates at special occasions in the lives of his congregation. Including confirmations, weddings, baptisms, funerals. And any way he can assist in time of crisis by using knowledge-based skills. Kind words, patience, and understanding. Visiting the sick and shunned. Providing for the unfortunate and comforting the bereaved are daily activities in which he readily engages in. And whereas he has helped the church ministry to flirt because of his administrative proficiency by executing leadership by example. Under his leadership, the pastors trio. Youth Development lunched with the mothers board, leadership development, and led infrastructural improvements. Initiatives on the hundred and four year old building. He also has social media advancements to spread the word of God on Sunday mornings for the sick and shunned. And whereas a community partner. He organized the fifth Sunday fellowship with fellow pastors and congregations to come together. To share commodities among the different religious faiths and address community concerns. The fifth Sunday Fellow occurs every fifth Sunday evening of the year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that today, the twenty third day of July. I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor of Albion. Join with the members of the city council and the citizens of Albion to honor Pastor Fred Alexander. And express our heartfelt gratitude for your impact on the members of Bethel Baptist Church and the Albian community at large. So this was already presented to Reverend Alexander at a special event.
Yeah, it was red. So, but we still need viewers.
Yeah, yeah.
Sign.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so we did already hear from. Alvin college students about the Albian Community Day. And next we have a presentation from Tyler Baker from Manor Custerison in regards to our audit.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Tyler Baker. I'm a senior manager at Manor Custerison. Um, what I'm going to present to you today is um. The product of our audit as of twelve thirty one of twenty twenty two. You should have a number of doc. Uh, documents in front of you. What we're going to be going over over the next couple of minutes um, is this bound. Report here. This is what we'll be going through. This is basically uh, the extraction of a lot of the significant pages that I want to talk about today. It kind of puts in a nice little easy to to follow along presentation and say on me having to flip through the the financial statements the entire time. So if any point you guys have any questions, feel free. Um, to uh, speak up at any point, and I will gladly um, do that. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Haley, David and their team for their effort throughout the process. It's not a small amount of time. Um, they obviously have their own jobs, uh, their daily jobs when we come in, and so that doesn't stop either. So I appreciate their um, availability for us and their efforts, too, throughout the process. It was a smooth process. Um, overall. So um. The the second page we have in there is the agenda. Um, we're going to talk about the auditors reports. We're going to go through a few specific um, pages. And again, most of these are extractions from the.
Oh.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed everything.
You can tell.
Great. So I just gave council an overview that we are doing a significant improvement project to a wastewater treatment plant that we are soliciting funding through the USDA RD that we for the least our request for proposals, we received two bids. The bid tabulation is included and I would just hand it over to you if you want to kind of give us an overview on where we stand and next steps.
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. Yep. So we did have a successful bid. We got two bidders on the project, which is good. In this climate, it's it's been pretty crazy lately. But we did get two bids. The low bidder was LD Dosa at seventeen million. My estimate on the project was sixteen. Let me see here. It did include in the packet as well, a breakdown of a few different items in there. But in my letter of recommendation and a budget letter, I requested because we because the bid came in higher than than my estimate. And because the city council previously had approved a loan up to eighteen million dollars for the project, we had to do a little bit of value engineering and take a few scope items out of the project in order to get it down and within budget. So that's the change order one that's also included in the packet and each of the items that were included in there. I went through all of those items, both with the contractor with LD Dosa themselves and got their approvals on the numbers as well as go through the scope changes with Kevin O'Brien and Jordan over at the wastewater treatment plant to make sure that what we were removing were not items that would hinder the process of the plant and and in operational sense. So we were able to fortunately come together and work a number of hours to be able to get this in place and remove the 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 scope value that we needed to to get down to the approved amount that council allowed for for the loan. So included in the packet is, as Haley said, there's a there's a letter that's in there that breaks down the the budget amounts and then also what my original numbers were and what the steps are to move forward. And then I believe the motions are were provided as well in order to approve LD Dosa for the contract of seventeen million dollars to do the wastewater treatment plant improvement project as well as the approval of change order one. The way the motions are set up is that the seventeen million dollar bid will be approved contingent upon the approval of change order one, which will happen concurrently, bringing us down into budget.
Do we have any questions?
And both of those items were included or reflected in the resolution. So it it does outline that we are taking the recommendation to award to the contractor for some two million as well as approve the contract modification or change order. So those motions are both reflected in the resolution. So we are city administration. We're recommending that council approves the resolution as drafted.
Any questions for city manager? Or Mr. Landers on this? Councilman French?
I'm confused and I'm easily confused. So that's not a surprise, but we have a total available of eighteen million. And the bid that came through was seventeen million. Yet we're cutting one point six million out of this budget. What am I missing?
Okay, so also included in the packet is a projects. There's a a letter to Mr. O'Brien that's signed that shows the total estimated budget of eighteen million and that the breakdown there. I believe that was included in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay. Yeah. So that's that's the breakdown there. And these were all numbers, the original numbers, not the seventeen million, but the engineering basic services numbers, the RPR, the additional services, admin legal numbers, those were all included in the original in the original application to the USDA for the RD loan application process approved by council in October of twenty twenty one when we went out to achieve or to to apply for the loans. Yeah. So the only number that changed in there was the bid number. And then because of the because the bid came in high, we needed to work that number down to get back within budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. So what you're saying is that some of the cuts that were made did not impact the effectiveness of the project.
Correct.
Correct. Yes, there's one. There's one item that's coming out that there was an improvement made to the final clarifiers onsite. The lower bearing on the final clarifier mechanism failed. I believe that was maybe in February of this year. A contractor was brought in and that was repaired. We had a discussion internally, myself, Kevin O'Brien and Jordan over at the plant about removing those mechanisms from the scope of this project as far as a replacement of those items. Because the one was repaired and is a good operation and the plant staff has been working on better control schemes with the current equipment that's in place. And Kevin also mentioned that if the bearing in the north clarifier, the one that has not been replaced at this time were to go out, they would be able to replace that in a similar fashion as they did with the with the other one without impacting their budget. So it was that that was the largest portion that was removed and the and the piece of the project scope that most I get, I would say most impacted process and how things operate over there at the plant. But that was something that we were able to remove and then get a large portion of those gains back that we needed to get the project within budget. And they were comfortable with that, both from an operations standpoint and from their confidence in the ability to make or provide maintenance and and maintain control of the plant while taking that piece of equipment out of the scope of the project.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Landers for giving us insight on this. About I'll explain. Any good amigo?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reid Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
And Mary Smith?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three oh four?
So.
Support.
Director Arnold?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So like we said, we have a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map as part of the zoning ordinance here. We are rezoning from residential two to campus development district. Nine parcels at the corner of Huron and Erie Street unchanged since the first time council saw it and yeah, looking forward to your approval and we'll be following up with the my ordinance outlines some special rules for publication when we have a rezoning amendment. So I haven't looked at those closely, but we'll be looking at them tomorrow morning.
Any questions for Director Arnold? Thank you. City clerk amigo?
Councilmember Reid?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Mary Smith?
Yes. Do I have a motion to go through the renewal application for process of grower permit in Kansasia Health Solutions?
Some will.
Support.
Right. So on your desktop, you have the applications in front of you. This was already approved by the planning commission. The novice has to come to council for final approval. Do we have any questions in regards to the paperwork that we haven't sent you?
I will just add that it has gone through the vetting process. So all of the required departments have reviewed and approved or signed off on this as well as the city attorney. This is just a renewal of a grower in a process.
City clerk amigo?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reid?
Yeah.
And Mary Smith?
Yeah. Maybe I'll want to slide these for me and city manager. Migo? I every time.
She has.
Marco? Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are asked to approve the MML liability and property sale invoice. Do I have a motion to approve?
Support.
City manager Slater?
Yeah. So this invoice, it's regarding the ongoing litigation with regarding former council member Sony Brown that still is ongoing. However, the cost for attorney fees have now exceeded exceeded are deductible. So right now we that's what's before you to cover that those costs attorney harness so that he will prepare a legal memo to update you all on where we stand with that. And we will go into closed session to review that. So we are just recommending approval of the invoice.
Any questions, comments? City clerk amigo?
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mary Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have applications in front of us for Bradley Arts for the Arts Commission. Mr. James Whitehouse for the DDA and the Recreation Advisory Commission. And for Andrew Pezzol for the DDA as well. We do have all three gentlemen in the gallery with us. So at this time, we are going to ask you to come forward and just introduce yourselves to us and give counsel an opportunity to ask you any questions if they have any. Andrew?
Yeah, my name is Andrew Chenzel. Recently just moved to the area. Applied to the DDA because Jim Seward, my landlord, had a report saying that they needed you know, more members a week ago. Me and my wife are going to plan on opening a business downtown. She's going to be grooming on living photography and that photography. So hopefully get that started here, you know, within the next hour or so. Get the walls a little bit on that. But yeah. We don't know what else to say.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Pezzol? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome out.
Welcome out.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thanks.
Mr. Arts, do you like?
Hello, I'm around the outside of Albin. I've been since I was born uh twenty six years now. I'm here joining the Albin Arts Commission. As uh Harris Slater asked a um someone from the Albin. Creator of Albin's Congress was showing. Um she initially asked Billy, but Billy is a resident of Monaco, therefore. Uh no, it will come kid. And then she asked me, since I am a person of Albin to uh. Go ahead and I said yes, I am the uh visitor in kind of special as as the creator of Albin. I am entering my third month there.
You know.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Arts? Thank you for the congratulations.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Whitehouse.
Uh Mr. Whitehouse. June Whitehouse. He was in Albin now. Twenty five years. He was at the time and um. New years in the valley, fourth generation, Albin person. Uh Albin Alas alumnus. Retired. Three year. I won't be my dress office at that Albin.
Who's uh up by two bicycle tires, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I didn't have like the two positions uh DDA. Similar story, June Stewart, maybe. Growing ours is all very in relation.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Whitehouse? Russell, well, thank you as well for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
City manager Snyder?
So moved.
Oh, did I have a motion?
No.
I can do it. I'm sorry.
It's a Monday.
Council member David. Yes.
Brian. Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
And there's.
Then, yes. Just want to thank you all for applying um for volunteering to serve our community in the different capacities that you're being asked. So much appreciate you. Next, we are going to be asked to approve the employee policies and procedures manual. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
City manager Snyder, now.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um so I, myself and Attorney Harkness, we started this process, a meeting with our um. Labor attorneys with color and Toma to update the city's employee policy handbook, which has not been updated since. Um early two thousand, so over twenty years. Um and then Director Ivan came on board and he. Took the lead and got us where we are right now. I'm sorry, before you, as the final version of that, we just updated. Reviewed all of our current policies, updated them to make sure they are in line with any laws and regulations. We did expand or add language to our FMLA policy as well as our short term disability. Um we did add, per the request of Councilmember Williams, a section to reflect the whistleblower act. Um this has been reviewed. Um by all of our union groups, um and we solicited feedback from them. Those changes have been made, and now we are recommending formal approval by the city council. So we can implement this with all city employees.
Any questions for city manager Snyder or or Ivan? City clerk Miguel?
Council member Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed. Yes. Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the non-union benefits manual?
So move.
Before.
Lady manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we um. We're working with our labor attorney. They recommended that we develop and implement one. We did not have one of these before, but this just outlines all of the benefits that are available to all of our non-union. And these kind of similar to all of our collective bargaining agreements for all of our union. Um there is one addition. Um we directed about and I had discussed how do we recruit and retain employees? So we are making the recommendation to implement a parental leave policy. Um so employees will, they have to have been employed with for a full year before they're eligible to take advantage of this. But they will be allowed to take four weeks of paid time off if they are expecting a child, whether that be through adoption, foster, or the birthing process. Um and then they will be required to use um any available sick time, vacation time, short term disability policy, FMLA leave. That they may have or be eligible for um. When starting the collective bargaining process, I think all of our unions, they kind of want to see something like this. So. Um we're just making that recommendation to approve. This additional benefit or policy.
Question. Which um guidelines to use? Does MML give you guidelines or the state or?
In terms of?
In terms of the contract language, in terms of the non-union benefits manual and things, or or do you just do it? Independently of of other. Means in the state.
Yep. So we do obviously um rely on MML. They have a lot of resources, but we work closely with our labor attorneys. So um attorneys who this is their. Expertise, they kind of advise or drafted the language and helped us prepare.
Okay, in accordance to state policies and expectations and things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk Miguel?
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Reed. Yes. Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Future items. Anything specific? Any council member would like to see if Mayor Beckham Jackson?
I see if I can get this right. You know, the uh information that um I'll say her name, but on Urban Avenue. She wanted to make sure that other people who brought it to the table, how many people, I guess, have with that process of the sprinkler system. I can't keep my home, so.
The.
Can I pick up my, I mean, because I have it in my note.
It's like the the washback of the sprinkler systems into the city lines.
Yes.
So we were past the trying to find um. I don't know if it's plumbers or.
Yes, so um Superintendent Heston, she he provided her with a list of certified plumbers that do this inspection. Um so we can add that list to our city website so that in um residents who are required to have this, have this um. Inspection completed, they can refer to that, contact a certified plumber to schedule that process. The backflow prevention.
Backflow, there you go. That's why I said I couldn't say the correct information. I was like.
Yeah, what I heard was cities are installing sprinkler systems for people. That'd be lovely.
So I don't know if you, if there's a further discussion that you would like to have.
Yes, um there was some other information that she wanted me to talk about, but I'm not, I'm privy to use my phone, so I could look at my email. I had it up.
So we'll just.
Yeah, because she had copied off three of us, so agenda item from next week as well. And then there's something else too. I would like to know what's going on with uh the EDC. Information on uh fires, uh what we do, what they're doing far as getting prepared and ready for um. Uh upcoming, you know, I hear about homes, I hear about uh maybe having uh. I don't even, I'm not going to say the word factories, but what we have, what what foundries, what businesses that we have coming into town or what are we doing for that?
So would you like uh to have Hammerman come in?
Yes, and give us some.
Where she is in regards to attracting new businesses and manufacturing.
Yes, yeah.
Housing, I guess the housing as well.
Yes, if that's part of her.
Quarterly reports, isn't that typically what EDC does?
Yeah.
It's about that time.
Yes, when Amy Depris was here, she would come before, I think it was quarterly, to give us an update on where they.
And we need to know that. Many people are asking the question. They want to know what we're doing, how we get be fair for one forward. Are we doing anything? So. It would be nice to have that come up, even if she can just give us elaborate on something. She might can't tell us everything she's doing, but elaborate on something.
Yeah.
City manager Snyder, could you invite uh President Wayne Webster to come to our next council meeting or a future council meeting?
Yes, I have, and he is obviously in high demand now that he's in town, but he um his assistant did confirm that um it is on his calendar for the second meeting in August. So he will be here to introduce himself and share a little bit about what's happening at the gallery. The second August meeting.
Any other agenda items? Okay, yeah.
I just like to say there's need to keep uh. Mr. Harry Bonner and our friends, his son has passed and it's popular in the South. We're going to make arrangements.
Your arrangements will be for Friday, yeah. At same.
Do we have uh anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address talks for public comment?
Think of all employees. Give us an update on the email that was sent out.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So included in my packet was um a copy of my report, just a few things that I'd like to know. So we have um. Picked off the twenty twenty four budget process, Director Clark. And I and the Deputy Treasurer Metz um last week, um the twentieth to begin that process. So stay tuned or we will have study sessions, work sessions to get us um ready for next year. My, I'm going to put this out there, Michael, I would like to have our budget approved by council before December. I know typically we do it in the summer months. But I hope is that we can go into the month of December.
Not for a minute.
Yes, let everybody enjoy the holiday season. So I know we have a lot of work ahead of us and we will be coordinating our capital improvement plan to tie into our upcoming budget. Because that is how you should be doing it. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I don't think it's something that cannot be accomplished. Um just an update on the dams feasibility study. So we just need to have a final sediment sample collected um to finalize that report. So we have been working with um the MDNR to an ego to collect that sample. Um tentative days have been scheduled for the first week of August. Um once we have collected those, we um then our project engineer will need to finalize that. Finalize that report and we are hoping to have the study completed before the end of September when they will come and provide you all or present that final report to you. Go over the recommended options on what to do with the dams. They have been shared. Uh they were shared in last July. Um there's five different options. Um so they will be here as um if I are able to ask any questions, because it's ultimately up to city council to decide which route we are looking to take. And we were awarded the million dollar grant to help us with the design phase of um. I believe three of the recommendations are to remove um some or all of the dams. And right now that is what the state is pushing. They're really wanting to see the waterways return back to their natural flow. So by having this feasibility study, we're really setting ourselves up to apply for and. And receive grant funding, because if we do go that option, it is going to be. A costly project. And right now we are, I think we're doing, taking the appropriate steps to make sure that we are ready to take advantage of some of that grant funding. So. Stay tuned for that and that is all I have. You have updates from all of the other departments. Everyone is, it's a busy, busy time here at City Hall, but I just want to applaud all of. Our departments on all of the hard work and everything that they are doing to make sure that we are running as smooth as possible.
Yeah, councilor.
Manager Snyder, um you say a final sediment sample. We have multiple dams. I would assume that there's more than one. Sample?
Yes, so they have, they have collected samples all throughout the process. So this study started, actually began last year. So I'm not exactly sure where at in the river they need to collect the final sample. That's above my expertise. But they are doing, I'm being told, the final sample that is needed is being collected and then. That final report will. Come to you all.
Do we have a? Time frame of sort or Haven Road? Have we been called anything from consumers or?
No, so right now, unfortunately, they are the holdup for that project. Um this project was supposed to be completed um by the end of June. Um and they are required, they need to secure easements to relocate a few more poles along that. Through along the roadway. Um this part of the project should have been completed at the start of the project. So if. For some reason, homeowners or property residents did not want to. Be uh before, but that we could have changed up the design. Um so I can say we are frustrated. I know our residents who live along that roadway are frustrated with how long it has taken. I've been working closely with the project engineer, Director O'Brien. They've been providing us with updates. Um they are in the process of reaching out to the residents who um where they need to secure the easements in the right way to see if they can do that. Um but right now I don't have. It's kind, we're kind of waiting for. Who's worse and.
Uh just to mention uh some improvements on that project. On both ends of the bridge, major entrances, the work though. Just to make it easier for residents to compete without.
And obviously, this delay has obviously added costs to the project, which our project engineer has been on top of that and has been communicating with consumers that those costs will be. Passed on to them since they're they're the ones who are holding up the project. Attorney Harkness has also been looped into that line of communication as well. So we are doing everything that we can do to get this um project completed, but right now we're kind of at a standstill until they do what they need to do to. Be able to relocate those poles.
Council member. Mayor Beckham Jackson?
Yes, I'd like to um, I thank you, Kevin O'Brien, and the ones that did get um. On Eden Street, that big old. Spot that was having trouble going in. I don't want to call it a hole or what, but when you. There was a problem there and you got some. Yeah, some asphalt asphalt in there. So I just want to thank you for that. That was uh, that was horrible. But thank you for getting it taken care of. And then also thanks for getting us uh the grills. And also the trash cans out there at the park. On Brian's Park. Thank you so much.
Uh I want to heap praise on whoever was involved with the Victory Bandshell Project, whether it be Bill Dobbins and Castor Cares or whether it was. Money from the Denelicos or whether it's our own city staff. Um the first concert was last night. That looks great. Um we're gonna have to add some topsoil to that sand. But uh it looks fantastic. I love the handicap pathways through the middle so that folks who are encumbered in some way. Can actually be in the middle of this of the space and enjoy the concert. So it really looks sweet. So thanks so much to everybody in the city of Albin and beyond who helped make that happen.
It was beautiful last.
Yes. Really was.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Um I. I just wanted to say that um. I think that council should give more recognition to our mayor pro temp. Um she does a lot uh for imbalances, though her work life balance very well. Um she does help with the agenda and the DDA chair. Um she does feel lean in for our mayor. And so when she goes out and um she may do a resolution or a proclamation when you're unable to do it. Um I've been seeing just uh. There's pristine council member. She's the mayor pro temp, so I would like to see more of us address her as that when we are. Um talking about her or addressing her in any of our uh policies and procedures. I think she deserves it.
Any other? All right, so I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support.